Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing is to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda?
We have a second?
Yes, sir.
We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing and all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. We have the minutes of September 4th and September 11th. We will take the fourth first. Motion to approve the minutes of September 4th.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from September 4th.
I'll second that. Any discussion? And now, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No.
I have stayed because I wasn't here.
You're in the day, you're here, so we'll have you that way. On September 11th, we have the minutes for us. Motion to approve them.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from September 11th.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
Just a comment here and go to the general basic fund and we'll talk about all of the claims that were approved. And we'll go back down here to community betterment fund. We have a $2,600, $2,500 payment to Mark Khan. I've never met this person and we're paying him a significant amount of money. I'd like to ask again to see if that person could come into the office at some point so we can at least put a name and face together.
You guys have to pay Mount Pleasant Utilities so that we don't want to ask them all for me.
Should we?
Yeah, you should. And everybody else that's on there, you should go and ask them all to come in.
Okay, they'll do that. But in the meantime, I would like Mark Khan to come in. Chad, you've never met this person, have you?
Not to my knowledge.
You walked in the door right now. I couldn't put a face with the name.
No. Nor could you do that in Mount Pleasant Utilities.
I could because they're wearing shirts.
Or access 78 or no?
I could because they're wearing shirts.
No. Any other else you think?
We'll move on here. With that, all those in favor, the minutes of September 11th, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Jake, you're up.
Okay. So we got a couple motions here. The first motion would be 28-2025-20 that the county approve right-of-way, yeah, right-of-way construction contracts for project LVC 172554-73-44 on Fremont Avenue over Unknown Creek.
Do you have a motion?
Unknown Creek. Is it my name?
My name. I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Discussion.
Is this the one east south of Brazils? Yep.
Okay.
So it's on Fremont Avenue, so if you're going to go to Conservation, take Fremont, drive to the east about a mile and then to the south, probably close to a half mile, and at the bottom of that hill, there's a small bridge that we are going to replace with a culvert.
Is that what your box culverts or is that the?
It will be a, it'll be a concrete box culvert, so it actually be a cast-in-place, so it's more of a long-term. We had looked at tank cars with that one, and we acquired two of them, and just with the rock formations that we got down there, I'd like to go to a concrete structure on that one.
Will this be pre-formed in?
It'll be formed in place. When they say cast in place, that is they actually pour it out there.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion and a second? All of us in favor of it? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No.
And then Mark, there are two contracts, or two parcels, four contracts, so they're two tickets, and she's got them tapped out there for you to sign. The next motion would be motion 29-2025-20 that the county approve construction plans for project L-VC 172554-73-44 on Fremont Avenue over Unknown Creek. The letting date is set for October 23rd, 2025.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the.
The letting date?
Letting date?
There's the letting date.
Yeah, you're approving the plans and the letting date established in that.
Yep. I have a second. Discussion.
We just had that, right?
Pretty much. Again, this is using local construction dollars, so this will be built or go out for letting, and then on October 23rd, that Thursday, we will bring the plans up here or the bids in here, open them, and then I'll take them back after we open them and review them, and then typically the next week, we would actually have a motion, if everything's in place, to award the contract, and then this project does have free winter work, so it would allow the contractor, if they wanted to come in this winter to work on it, they could, but it will have a late start date of next spring, as far as the time we can start charging days and that. So this is one of those projects that we're going to go out for bids just to build the culvert, and then they'll backfill the top of box, and then Lee will come in, the road crew will come in and finish the grading and the site work out there.
So how long do you think overall, the length of that project?
You know, it all depends on timing and weather and everything else. You know, I would anticipate three, four weeks of a contractor removing the existing bridge and building a box culvert as long as weather is good, and then we probably have another three weeks of fetching up our work, so we would anticipate probably eight weeks if everything goes well.
Great. Thank you.
Do we have a paper to sign for that?
Yeah. Once you vote on it, I ain't got to get it to you. Okay, second. I hate it.
We've got a motion and a second. All of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No.
And then the problem, this is for you to sign for the notice to bidders, if you would, at the bottom, and then this is the title sheet. We start it this way.
Must carry some water then, huh?
It does. So as it stands right now for kind of next year's construction, we're going to potentially have three box culverts being constructed in the county along with our bridge out here on that, so we'll have to work on that.
Is that a little more than normal or is it kind of average?
It, the dollar amount is more than normal because typically when you don't usually have back-to-back years where we're spending close to $5 million on construction, but just the way the timing worked with the projects that we have. So these other ones are using VR funds or bridge funds, foreign-to-market funds, and then this one's using local funds, so there's just.
Kind of the timing.
These are the ones that bring in the works and get through. Culverts usually don't take a lot of inspection time. The ones with federal dollars do require a little more time on our part. The local side of it usually can make through those pretty quick and the projects move fast. Okay, thank you. Maintenance update, just to give an idea of what we've been working on, and most of us have focused on this week. We were working on seating prep and placing topsoil on several projects. It's on Old Highway 34 where we did the seal coat this summer, and we did some site work out there. We are now, some of the excavation that they did when they excavated for the shoulders, we've placed that on the east end near Benton Avenue, and they are out there now, or they have been placing some black dirt, reworking that slope to get it prepped, and we're out there trying to seed today. So last time we went in and seeded some out there, we had heavy rain, so I don't know if that's a connection.
Sweet.
So you should have done this like two weeks ago.
Maybe, I don't know. So tomorrow, the plan is we're going to put some matting down. After we get it seeded, we're going to go and put some matting down just for some of the hills and stuff and the ditches that we have to get that established. And then we're also doing some work on Franklin Avenue where we went in and put a tile to take care of a spring that was draining into our ditch. The tile's working well. Now it's dried up, so they're out there today putting some black dirt on and trying to get that, those slopes finished up so we can get it seeded in front of that person's property. So that's kind of our big thing that's taking a lot of guys. In the meantime, we're also using our blade guys, sorry. Rock resurfacing. We are now working out of our quarry haul in, in the tip of the canoe, so pretty much in, just to the southwest here that we're working on resurfacing our regular rock plan. And then shoulder maintenance. We've had a couple blade operators working on shoulder maintenance where we're actually out there disking, pulling up the shoulder up to the edge of the pavement, placing some rock with our belt placer on dump truck. It's kind of a slow operation, but they're working on getting things packed in. So projects that we've worked on up to this point would be Oasis Avenue north of Winfield, Noble Road north of Highway 78. We did do some work on Franklin Avenue, south of Trenton, ident right, excuse me, that's bad language, 170th Street from Trenton to Highway 218, we did some work there as well.
We're going to do some work south of Salem as well?
Yep, we're working our way south. So we've kind of been up north, then we're going to continue working south, so.
Okay. And I talked about that last week.
Yep, we will get down to south of Salem because it does hold up. So with that operation, it's just a little slower, but it's a combination of disking and putting rock in and trying to compact it. So it's not a full shoulder, and it's what we call our typical maintenance, just to bring up that edge for it. Other things we're working on, signs, again, just miscellaneous repairs, mowing. We were, we have one guy working on gravel roads still, and then we have put Batwing out to work on some of these prep projects with our seeding operation, as well as working on some of our bigger right-of-ways along the paved roads, so if we can get some of that smaller brush chewed up, they're working on that. So you will see that Batwing working in various locations where we can fit it in the right-of-way. And then the last stuff I got is miscellaneous. Again, it just had that note there that we're still thinking it will not be before the middle of October. I don't have a date yet, but I just want to put that out there that that bridge is, that date's coming, but it's probably closer to the middle of October.
Okay. Will you have your road grader guys out since we've got some rain to help with that washboard situation?
We have had them go out at times right now to go hit certain spots. We've had some other issues just depending on where they're at, but it is blading dry rock, or it usually doesn't work out real well. So that's why we've been very hands-off at this point. We are doing other things with them, but last Friday, we sent them out to go take care of some intersections, some of their problematic areas that they would typically have with washboards or rumble strips that you get in the rock when people break and slow down and accelerate. So we have done that. If we get moisture, yes, then we will cease our rocking operations and get them outblading as soon as we can.
Thanks.
Anything else?
Yes. I had a discussion with you yesterday. I had a phone call about the air brake situation. This was in the Winfield area, and I had a little discussion with Jake and what we can actually do. Can you enlighten me what you said to?
Yeah, I think Chad summarized it pretty well. It's probably been a couple months ago when you visited with the DOT that if, if we did create an, I think it'd be ordinance, I'm not exactly sure. You guys created ordinance on that, that the state would put up signs coming into the county, so you would see them at the four corners of our county, the four edges of the county, any state road that comes in, they would have to sign, very similar to what Lee County does. And then I would have to investigate, like, how many times would we be doing it? We would not want to do it at every intersection. That would be kind of that blanket situation, so I don't have a good answer how many signs we're talking about. I think the big concern has always been, and the sheriff's kind of talked about it, is how do you enforce the J-Break ordinance, and that's usually sound and visual, and that would require law enforcement. So on the aspects of who's going to facilitate that, that comes back to the sheriff's office on enforcement. I think he said that they could look into ways to do that. It's just a matter of how effective the tool is that going to be in the process to be issued. Putting up signs is an issue. There is a cost to putting up signs and buying the signs and adding more signs out there, but if that is the direction that you guys go, then I'd have to investigate that more and what we want to do. Our part is putting up signs essentially, and that would only be on the county roads and trying to determine how often that, and I think the big thing is, is as you come into our county, that's really what you're delineating. So we wouldn't be able to delineate it at each community as you leave. I don't think that would be warranted, but I'd have to dig into that some more.
So we need to follow up with the sheriff then?
I think it's really coming out the, where, my opinion would be is, you know, if you guys make that decision to go that direction, then I would have to work on what does that look like for signage? And then as enforcement goes, I think that's where Rich comes in to say, how do we enforce that? What do you need to be able to enforce that? And I can't speak on that, but essentially what I need from you guys is if you go that direction, then I will work on ordering signs and getting a con, you know. In the meantime, I can figure out how many signs do we think we would have to do if we just did the perimeter of the county as far as, you know, paved roads is what we're really arguing on this, show it up on gravel. At least in my perspective, that's not probably where we're seeing the issues at. But my understanding from what you said last night is that the DOT would provide the signs?
Well.
The state? Or maybe that wasn't quite clear.
I don't know if they will actually pay for it or not, but I'll dig into that again to make sure that everybody's on that same page, so. I'll, because I did talk to some of the DOT engineers and got a little information, and, but I'll make sure that everybody's on the same page.
We'll follow up with the sheriff and then sort of decide what.
Yeah, I think this is coming up.
We're coming up all the time and you know.
I don't think it's reasonable to be posting signs on every county gravel road to what you said for that.
No, and that's kind of what the state was saying is that basically as you come into the county, that's where it's denoted, and I think we would take the same stance on the pavement, so. What the DOT did say though is you would not put signs up in problematic areas or that they don't put, so like some of the question was coming down to 18 on the big hill before you come to the Skunk River. That would, they would not put a sign up there because that's where you have an issue. It's, it's just notification that, that there is an ordinance, there is a law.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Next on our agenda is resolution 28-2025, advanced cost of urban renewal project certification of debt incurred. And this is the Hershey Hall project. We have this resolution 28-2025. This is something, as we read this, you'll understand, this is pursuant to an ordinance that we did last year, and it is to make sure that the costs that we incur will be taken care of. Is that a good way to put it? Alright. Okay, whereas the Henry County adopted the Henry County Hershey Hall Urban Renewal Plan for the Henry, for the Henry County Hershey Hall Urban Renewal Area in 2024, and whereas the plan authorizes various project, project, and urban renewal projects to be undertaken within the urban renewal area, including the planning, engineering fees, attorney fees, administration, and other related costs to support the urban renewal project and planning. Whereas the county has advanced money for their primary community betterment fund to pay for the attorney's fees and expenses incurred in preparing and adopting the plan as associated in the development agreement. Whereas it is intend, the intention of the county to certify the amount of funds advanced for the administrative cost projection, cost project for the reimbursement under Iowa Code Section 403.19 before the December 1, 2025. And whereas the amount of funds advanced to date of administrative costs in the preparing and adopting the plan and development agreement is $8,903.50, and whereas before approving the urban renewal project for reimbursement, the tax increment is, it is necessary to make a certain funding under the Iowa Code Chapter 403. Whereas administrative cost project is identified as a plan as an urban renewal project within the urban renewal area, and in the judgment of the board will find, the board will further one or more of the projects of its plan. Therefore, the administrative cost constitutes a public use of purpose as proposed in the Iowa Code Chapter 15A and 403. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Supervisors of the Henry County State of Iowa. Section 1 pursuant to the ordinance of number 32-2024. There was, there has been a fund, there has been established the Henry County Hershey Hall Urban Renewal Area Tax Increment Revenue Fund into in which the increment property tax revenue received from the urban renewal area are deposited. The board finds administrative cost code, cost project to be in the urban renewal project as identified in Iowa Code Chapter 304 and future funds that said administrative cost project will be included in the plan of the urban renewal area, Section 2. This, this is thereby directed at the total cost of the administrative cost project advanced from time to time from the urban, from the community betterment fund shall be treated as advanced from the community betterment fund, and the community betterment fund shall be reimbursed for its total administrative cost from the tax increment finance, the tax increment fund. Section 3, all costs to be incurred from, for the administrative cost project are approved to be advanced and described in Section 2. The administrative cost project has a cost of $8,903.50 to date. Section 4, the certification of the reimbursement under the Iowa Code Section 403.19 shall be made on or before December 1, 2025. We have this resolution. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion with conversation.
One second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion.
Mr. Chairman, when I was following along, there was a, there was a tongue twister there.
403?
It was Iowa Code Chapter 403, not 304.
Excuse me.
But it was corrected, it was corrected later, so.
That's my dyslexia, so. Any other comments?
No, my only comment was just following up again with the assessor to see what the dollar values really truly are here, so we understand the dollars that we're dealing with, what the assessed value is going to be as well as what the tax is going to be, so we know in the long term how long it's going to take us to recoup the dollars that we're investing in this project, so I'll follow up with him on that.
Alright, we'll call those.
Dietrich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Yes. Motion to rev- boost the passes. Next on our agenda, Lynn, you're up.
Good morning. Thank you for having me this morning. I'd like to start by saying thank you for addressing the potholes on the parking lot, coming in. I brought that to you guys' attention last meeting, and like the following week, Jake had his crew out there and they were filling those potholes, and that was, made it much nicer. So thank you so much for having your team do that. It made it nicer for the public and just going in and out of there, so. With that said, I, I've already distributed out my monthly report to the board showing where our landfill's been running. You can see on the second page there, there's your detailed page. The front page is the comparison page. I think we're running in comparison to what we've been running the last few years. Granted, we have a few months left, but if you look at what we've kind of averaged for landfill tonnages, we're probably going to be around a 645-ton range with the landfill fees based off what we've been running this year in 2025, so we'll be very close to where we're at in the last two years. In reference to landfill, recycling, I feel, is about the same thing. So we're, we're kind of on a pretty smooth line, just looking at the averages, you know. These are up and down months, you know. You can see that in April, recycling was up, and then you can also see like, go back to April. Our tonnage of the landfill up as well, we're 77.64, just as an average. You know, you look at those numbers and obviously spring brings spring cleanup, you know, people bring stuff in, you know.
Bulk cleanup is a part of it?
Bulk cleanup would be included in that, yes. Yeah, yeah, so. I'll give you a second to take a look at those numbers.
While we're looking at those numbers, I saw you put some new signs out there about the locations that are permissible for.
Yes, I did, yeah. Yep, put that up. I sent you gentlemen a text message showing what, I kind of was fighting with trying to get some things painted out there, the barriers painted. With all the rain we were getting, it seemed like it threw up until July and then it just stopped, but we could never fit in to get the barriers painted, repainted yellow. They were really rusted. With that, we wanted to put the new signs up, so we did get the new barriers repainted, ended up taking them completely down, took them to Fairfield, having them sandblasted and painted with a Sherwin-Annex paint. They look really nice, and then I put the signs back up, and then we put that new sign up, basically describes, you know, the townships and who can and cannot use it. It's a nice go-to for folks when they come in and say, oh yeah, I live in, you know, whether you're incorporated or non-incorporated, you know, so.
Was Westwood included on that?
Uh, Westwood should be on there, yeah, because it's a, it's a town. It's not incorporated, so you can't, they can't bring it in.
I didn't know if I'd seen that listed out.
Yeah, it should be on there.
I think it is.
And the computer stuff that you're collecting separately, that's all going as planned too?
Mm-hmm, yes it is, yep.
Has that gone up or down by once?
No, it hasn't. Not the same. Not the same. We had quite a bit, it seemed like it right at first, but it's kind of taped up a little bit, so.
Okay.
But, yeah.
That's a good plan to get that up. I was saying, get it out of the rubble.
I believe so, yeah. It's working out good. I like the way it's running smoothly.
Do I need to report to Austin on that or have you talked to him about that at all?
I think I made a, made a phone call to him. I've talked to him several times. I don't remember if I talked to him about that specifically, but yeah.
I'll talk, I'll tell him more.
Yeah.
And you're all in favor of?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
Is that part of, is that included in the RFP then for this year?
Yes, it is.
So it's a separate entity?
Yeah.
And we haul that out?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, it's a, it's a
I would never say.
Non-regulated item, being it's not solid waste.
Right.
But it's, it's part of that RFP. I've read the RFP and I've seen it in there, so.
Okay, alright. I didn't see if that's what I was asking. I'm not as familiar as you.
Did you folk, did you see the pictures I sent where I did it? So that's the entry door. Everyone first walk in. In August, I noticed the entry, when we walked in, was getting really soft right there, and the seals on the door, I walked in, I actually didn't bring my phone in, but I took pictures of the seals on the door. The door seals are all good. I'm not sure it's just from walking in, maybe this year with all the rain we have had, and your feet are wet right there, but this, the floor be, we, that floor was just replaced, just the tile last year. Just the tile. They put a new tile on it, but, so it was getting soft, so that picture right there is this morning about 6:00. I sent Brady over this morning and I said, I want you to remove the tile back, two tiles, and let's see what's earning that.
So that subfloor is all ratted out?
That subfloor is ratted out, so he's probably got it already cut out this morning. I mean, I could push that spot right there through. I ran up to my farm this morning and I happened that, he said it was 17 inches. I got out there, I hadn't had an exact piece of board, 17 inches wide, so, yeah. I'm going, we're going to cut that out today and then slap that piece of board in there, but it's plywood and putting plywood back in.
You know that, that concrete board that you put like around showers and high moisture areas, like I wonder if that would be a good fix for that, you know?
That would be a good spot to have that.
You would have to support it. I mean, it obviously wouldn't.
Right.
I don't know what the floor joists and that are or anything of that nature, but, yeah.
I believe they're two-by-sixes because I put my hand on.
How often, you know, how close they are.
Yeah, I don't know that yet, but I did reach down in there. I pushed my hand on through and it felt like a two-by-six, Chad, and they felt good.
They did?
They felt good, yeah. Right underneath that, that felt good, so. He'll have it opened up. We'll see what the two-by-sixes, how, the condition of those are in. But I do think that's a good idea, maybe put that hardy board in there. And if, if there's, if it's.
Because like you said, this is the second rebuild on that floor right there in, in relative short time period.
Yeah. We've never fixed the actual, the floor deck itself.
Right.
Just the fluorine, yeah.
But if a foundation's bad, you don't have anything to do with it.
Yeah, totally agree.
Can you keep it posted?
Yeah.
I know you don't keep us posted on what you find underneath ours, but if we need to do more, we'll definitely do something.
Yeah. Well, if it's, it looked like it was that press, that press all that stuff.
Oh.
You know what I mean? And so it started bloating and just kind of, you know. I'll see how thick it is. If we have room. have room, I like Chad's idea, to put that that plywood that exists, you know, put that plywood down and put that that board on top of that, you know what I mean? Seal it all up, so. Any other questions, gentlemen?
I don't have any.
I haven't.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
You bet, thank you.
Thanks for wearing that shirt.
Yes.
Next on our agenda is subcommittee report.
Mississippi Valley will have its first restructuring, reorganization meeting via Zoom, September twenty-nine at twelve P. M. They said probably a lot, a couple hours of Zoom time for it, so I will tune in.
Is that it?
That's it.
Had a rush meeting the other day and we talked financials, everything is good there. Bruce Hudson, who's the director, will be out for a few weeks on some medical leave and we'll have another meeting in a month, so everything is good as far as we can see there. Today I have Craig River Housing Trust Fund down in Burlington, so I'll be heading to that, hopefully I'll get some answers to some questions that we've had for some time and Robert and I have an ongoing question with those folks on some dollars that are due on an invoice that I'll follow up on today, Robert, as well, so I'll get some answers for that and then I also have a Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Session, so, busy afternoon.
Can you ask about the C bus situation?
That's on the list as well.
Don't you appreciate that? Because I got another phone call this week about it.
That's a great idea, so if you want to share that, go right ahead, but I will follow up on that.
Well, we just, um, just didn't know, had somebody approached me and asked if C bus could do transportation for crooked fuel, I did not know, so looking at that potential.
Yeah, it's a great idea and following up with Zach James and Mike Norris on that today. Again, I sent him an email about a week and a half ago and they figured on the list of things to discuss today.
Okay, good.
Some good resolution. And that's it for subcommittees, and I have a question, so, but if you've got a subcommittee, go ahead.
I have, yeah, I have, I had regional, Southeast Iowa Community Action, we are still in the process of getting a new head start in Fort Madison and working that with head start hierarchy to make sure that all the funds are correct, that we can move ahead with what we're up to. And we are, we are in the process of buying or had bought a church in Fort Madison and the renovation of that. And the other thing was, we had our annual raise for people and with the funding that is very limited, everybody just got straight across the board a thirty cent an hour rate and that's all they could afford, so, and that was, that was tough even, so that's my committee meeting.
Okay, we had gotten an email from the Danville Telecommunications folks about direction on where to spend the ARPA money that we granted to them and I didn't know if we had any input on that or any direction from the original grant from the ARPA funds.
Their original plan, Danville was kind of built from Danville west into the south New London, Lowell.
Head south, yes.
Area kind of migrate to the.
Towards Geo area.
Yeah.
Yeah, and my understanding is Mr. Fensel, who's under there?
Correct, yeah, there's a new person.
So maybe that's part of the issue.
Uh, there we go.
And I think the River Valley towards Lowell and and up in the general south New London was their targeted area.
So they're looking for some direction here and I don't know how that works, so I thought I'd bring it up to us. Gina Parsons is the new person that is facilitating that grant and those ARPA funds. And that came in to us on Tuesday, the. I believe it was Tuesday, let me double check, September sixteenth, Tuesday the sixteenth. So if you guys want to review that, I don't know how we proceed with these folks, but they're asking for some direction.
I think we'll all go ahead and follow up on it and see if they need to come in or not and see if there's discussion, change from there.
But most of what you thought originally was from Danville west towards Lowell.
Actually, they gave us all the information.
Jim Towne.
Valves and everything.
Not so much Jim Towne, but from Danville east into Hendrick County, the.
Into what?
West, yeah, west, you know, into Hendrick County then proceed the river bottom area and that, what was the D, where the Service Desert or they they use that terminology where the geography wouldn't allow a lot of the.
He showed us the map of what it would do and what their in future intentions we're going to be doing, also making a loop to include, to be very inclusive.
All right.
And I I know some of that work has already been done, I have a relative who lives down on like Mud Creek Park and they had the availability to get connected up with broadband and everything there, so I don't, you know, know what money stream they use.
Yeah, okay, that'd be good to know, but yeah, if you want to follow up, that'd be great.
Public comment. Me, Lynn, are you ready for us?
All right, I don't know, you guys had a chance to review that? There ain't how, I mentioned something about this last week, but Chad wasn't here, but I'll go over it again, kind of, but the way all this mess got started, and you guys know where I live, we're twelve and a half miles northwest of here and we don't get to such town on Sunday very often and we didn't even know this protest was going on until July. And the way it got started, we were at the Trump rally on the third of July in Des Moines and the way the Democrats lined the the entrance and the way they greeted us going in, I thought that was pretty, I don't know what you're saying, fantastic or something, so I figured out how to write a letter to the editor and I put a letter to the editor about the way the Democrats acted and, believe it or not, somebody from that protest group responded to me, said we we do the same thing, whatever, whatever, and invited me to come down to what they call the rally, so I did. And and then I kind of got in the habit because I couldn't find him first time and I start to West End and walk east because it's downhill, you know, and then Vicki'd wait for me out here and she picked me up and we'd go eat lunch, but I didn't hang around them very long because I didn't want anybody to see me with them and and some of them knew me anyhow and knew, that's not good, so anyhow, then I've been known to hang around the vet hall once in a while, some of them people are my friends, you know, and so there comes this complaint about them being on the memorial and yeah, I talked to them about that, the band being on the memorial, they said it's public property and and I didn't see it that way, I always thought, you know, the memorial was sacred, just like the cross and the flag, but they didn't share that view and whatever, whatever, but, so, one of the guys did mention to me about the the receptacle behind the memorial and that they were tapped into that to power their equipment and so I did bring that in here. I don't think I accused them of anything, but I know I asked two guys to shut the power off. You know, I'd have to review the video for sure, but then, so they came in here, I don't know, whatever day that was, in the meeting, I think it was six or seven or eight of them, that Casey said she got an anonymous email and that wasn't from me, I don't do anonymous, but anyhow, believe it or not, I found out who sent that email to her, how he come up with her email address, I don't know, and he's not even a veteran, but anyhow, I don't know how you do anonymous on an email, I asked him about that and he says all you got to do is hit reply, but anyhow, so after that big blow up, you know, I get my three by three God and Trump sign, custom made, ten foot poles, and I'm out there on Sunday right with them, an hour and fifteen minutes, and it's pretty tough on this old body to stand there like that, you know, but I did it, but when I went out, I was pretty impressed, them guys, the band, they greeted me and said thanks for coming out and they were not on the memorial, so I thought that's pretty good and before I forget it, I did publicly thank them for getting off the memorial in the paper, I did, I sent that to the paper, so anyhow, and and this cute little note, that's fine, I don't care, whatever, and tomorrow I'll take that out, you know, we have breakfast on Fridays, the third Friday of the month at the vet's vet's hall, so I'll take that note out and share them and those guys, you know, they're going to be glad that the band is not on the memorial, because those people, they think like I do, think it's not a platform for political party protest, so anyhow, that enough about that?
Thank you.
Yeah, now, the other thing is, Chad, since you weren't here last week, and I mentioned that anonymous call I got, I think it was on the second of September, some lady calls me, just moved to town, interested in the county government, and I thought that's pretty special, and she lived in London Heights, she got my name from watching John Bean video and asking me about what's going on here and real interested in your I T guy, and the call came on Vicki's phone and I asked her how she got the number, she wouldn't tell me, she wouldn't tell me her name and thought that's pretty interesting, so I gave her my phone number, so the next day then, your I T guy calls me, that'd been Wednesday afternoon and he just got back from vacation, so I'm thinking he'll be in here on Thursday, but he wasn't, but anyhow, okay, so I asked him how they got my number, everybody in the courthouse has your number, well, I don't think that's true, I think his his wife's the anonymous caller the night before and that's how they got my number, but anyhow, he was trying to straighten me out, I asked him if he was working down at the ordinance plant and he kind of hemmed around and he said he was down there, but I'm I'm going back to my complaint, you guys just gave him a four thousand dollar raise for what? For what? You're throwing money at it and and you're questioning his work ethic and good grief, he wants to get two of you guys removed because you broke the law, he's got all that extra money now to hire an attorney from Iowa City, so I I I just think private contract the I T service, save us some money, that's our money you guys are throwing around. I guess I'm done.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Tracy Lamb, I'm the city editor of the Hawkeye newspaper, I just have a question about the Hershey Hall project, I realize that I'm coming in after the fact, what is that, just briefly, if you could just give me a little.
It's, we made it to Tiff District and this is cost that's going to be incurred to get the.
Sure, but where is Hershey Hall?
Portion of the old Iowa West.
Okay, all right, that's, I I thought so, I wanted confirmation, so, all right, thank you.
If you drive north on Broadway, it's part of the campus up there.
Sure.
Presently surrounded by a temporary chain link fence, there's some construction equipment out there, so you can visually see what.
So are you, you own that? No, you're just providing funds for?
We're providing funds for the Tiff District, but we will recoup those funds later.
Sure, right, and so you, the Mount Pleasant School District?
No.
No.
Do you know who owns it?
We're sales.
So is it, oh, Chris Els owner, okay.
He's one that came in.
I'm familiar with that, so, yeah.
He's the college school down there.
Thank, yes, yeah, yeah, thank you.
It's under Hershey, Hershey Hall.
So he's probably developing it into housing, so, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I was just inquiring as to whether we are in the process of the meeting room and the videos, if we've made any progress or where, where's the process?
We've had thoughts, but no one has developed anything of our thoughts, to be truthful.
Okay, because the last time you mentioned emergency management and stuff like that, so I wasn't sure if anymore had been discussed about that.
Some other ideas have been brought up and nothing has been followed up on it yet.
So are there going to be like work sessions or pricing or discussions?
And one of the things we're going right now is looking at the blueprints, the map that we recently got, so we we finally got a copy of the blueprints for the buildings that we have here in the county.
Oh, okay.
And take a look at square footage, which will help us make a better decision on what we can do.
Okay.
And then we did get a quote from our I T folks on the audio and roughly forty-seven or forty-six ninety-five, I think was the number that was quoted to us for audio visual capabilities.
For the upstairs, for the second floor.
Correct, in the conference room, so I can't imagine that changing significantly from the same perspective from hardware, software, it's just a matter, to your point of finding a room, so now that we have the the blueprints to look at, we can do a better job of making a decision, but without anything finalized.
Okay, is emergency management including included in that?
All the facilities are included.
All of it, okay.
Looking at what's possible.
Okay, so will there be a timeframe as to when that will be discussed again or how that process is going to move forward?
That is a really good question. We have not had that discussion, because this morning we just had a discussion in reference to the blueprints and sizes of various rooms and that just came out a couple, I don't know, within the week.
Oh, okay.
Finally got that and it was based off of some evacuation plans and ability to be able to facilitate people, so hopefully in the near future, Mark, we can set a timeframe to talk about that.
Okay.
I have floated the idea of the emergency management building with the emergency management director that works out there and one of the other office over, the the D O T office investigator out there about utilizing the emergency management small conference room as an office area and then the 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 larger classroom as a meeting hall type thing. D O T, I mean, they just thought to buy one office and they really don't have anything to do with it. Walt said he would think about it and and talk about it and, you know, kind of ponder back and forth, you know, anything that might come out of that, you know, what what do you think of that in the event of a catastrophe or something, would it, would it take up space, you know, what what spaces would be available for that, I said it's just an idea at this point in time, it's just something that we thought about.
Okay, I also had one of our Henry County Watchman followers inquire on our Facebook page recently about why there's no photo of you, Steve Dietrich, on the supervisor's page, and I didn't know the answer to that.
I'm just not photogenic.
I didn't know the answer to that question, so I told him I would ask during public comment forum.
Yeah, that's on my list of things to work on.
Okay.
We'll get something.
Do you have any, send me the headshot, yeah?
Yeah, no, thank you.
I want to throw this out real quick, that one of the first things those protesters sent to me when I was out there, they mentioned the motorcycle riding up the sidewalk, you know, and how dangerous that was and and I'm sure it was, but I asked that last Sunday when I was out there, there was a couple cops, you know, kind of circling and and one of them then stood over by the generator and I asked him on the way out about that, he said, yeah, they they told me who it was, they thought they knew who it was and and they went and asked the guy and he had an alibi, but it seems to be that the ground around here is police or city responsibility and not county responsibility, that's what this cop seemed to think, I don't know, but I don't know if if the protesters went to the city to ask about security cameras or whatever, I don't know, but.
I guess I have a comment, so as a public citizen, I felt that there needed to be video of the meetings and so we took that under consideration and did it ourselves, so maybe the protesters need to video their protest so they have their own records too until this can be resolved, because that's why I'm asking about public meetings and so that would be a suggestion to them, so.
All right, is there other business before us? One more comment?
Yes.
Yes, why is it, I have Chad call the merc, ambulance for my father in the past, but why is it when you call, uh, nine-one-one? They'll ask you what your emergency is, and they'll ask you, it's, it goes to Henry, uh, Lee County, and then they'll say, are you in Henry County? And then they turn you over to Henry County, why isn't it going to Henry County? I live in Henry County.
I know where you live, I know you are a Henry County resident, I don't know why that routing unless there would be a, uh, a used line, and it got routed there as a backup or something, I, I don't know, I don't know.
Well, I mean, this is wasting minutes, seconds, you know, trying to get an ambulance here, and I don't know, the other day, there was a vehicle going the opposite way on this two-lane, and we tried to call nine-one-one, and. We couldn't get anywhere because we're transferred to Lee County, and then they supposedly transferred us back to Henry County, until we got back, it was already reported, but, I mean, if, this back and forth stuff. You know, you call nine-one for emergency, and this going Lee County and then back to Henry County, I mean, do I live in Henry County, or do I live in Lee County?
We know where you live.
Well, it's frustrating when you call nine-one-one. It is to me. I pay taxes in it, Lee, Henry County. Did my family have Lee County?
I don't have an answer to give to you right now, I don't know why that routing would be.
Well, you need to look into it, will you look into it for me?
Yeah, I will, uh, do you have, do you have a date and a time of when you made that call?
Or, Steve? Well, it was just the other day here, on two eighteen, when the vehicle's going the wrong direction.
What day was that, was that Tu- Tuesday, did you talk, you just told me that, what day was it, Tuesday or Wednesday?
My brother was off that weekday, a couple weeks ago.
Oh, he was, okay.
Yeah, I was just going the wrong direction, down the highway, and I called, and, yeah, yeah, we got to transfer you to Lee County. And, I mean, it went to Lee County, and then we'll have to transfer you to Henry County, I mean, it don't make any difference what day it was, it's still needs to be.
Yeah, we'll follow up.
Addressed.
If, if you leave either Steve, uh, with Steve or me, your telephone number, get back with you and see what we can find out.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, it's, I know, I don't, other people have that problem, but down our way we do.
What else you got?
I have nothing else. Motion to, you have to say those?
If any of you guys email me, or public emails me, my computer is in awful right now, I can't get on emails, so keep that in mind, I, I can still get in on the, the terminal here, so I'll check it periodically, but I don't have a readily available.
All right, and you're going to get with Derek on that, though?
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Yes.
Auto papers, aye?
Aye.
Aye, you're adjourned.